I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. There are no practice fire alarms planned for this evening, so if the bell goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible. We assemble across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone to switch mobile phones either to off or to silent, please? And we move on. In terms of public, I would like to say as a committee we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. However, please respect those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. Moving on to the introduction to the officers in front of me. On the far side is Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer. Then Chris French, who's head of the Southern Area Planning Committee. Then Olivia Goram, planning officer. Philippa Standen, planning officer. And then Patrick Arthur, who's the Deputy Development Control Manager. So, the agenda. Item number one. Could I ask you to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 27th of February? I've been on the table half an hour. May I have your consent to sign those as true record? Thank you. Apologies for absence, we're all here. Disclosure of interest, Emma.
None before the meeting, but I believe that there's an unobquiety interest from Haysmere Town Council.
Indeed. Thank you very much for that. councillor Edwards.
Just said that.
Yeah. Yeah. Indeed. Item four, questions by members of the public. Have there been any, Emma?
None.
Question from members, Emma?
None.
There aren't any relevant updates to government guidance, so moving on. Performance against government targets, there's no change to that since our last meeting. Applications for planning permission. A1, site inspection should any be necessary, they'll be on... It says choose the 28th of May, that's not correct. There is a site visit planned for the 17th of April, the Georgian Hotel. So that is planned... 10 o'clock in the morning. Thank you. Right. Applications subject to public speaking. A1 is WA 2018, 1308 Beech Hill, Midhurst Road, Haysmere, GU 27, 2 P T. The purpose of erection of a new dwelling, and Olivia Goram to present this to us. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Good evening, members. If I could just draw your attention to the update sheet, which highlights a correction to a policy referenced in the report, and also an additional condition regarding hours of construction and amendments to the impact of trees and housing land specify sections of the report. In addition to these changes, we've also made a change to condition eight on page 31, which relates to the landscaping scheme. The first sentence has been amended to read, "Prior to the first occupation of the proposed dwelling, a detailed scheme for landscaping of the site, including the boundary treatment along the southern boundary and retention of existing landscape features shall be submitted and improved in writing by the local planning authority." In addition to this, we have also added an informative, which states that the applicant is advised that should any damage occur to the driveway from construction vehicles during the course of construction, then the applicant should ensure that this damage is repaired. In light of these changes, the revised recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 10 set out in the officer's report, and that's to include the amendments to the landscaping condition, and condition 11 contained in the update sheet, together with informatives 1 to 12 set out in the officer's report, and informative 13 regarding damage from construction vehicles. This slide shows the location plan. The site lies to the northwest of Midhurst Road, and is accessed by a shared access road which also serves the surrounding five properties. The site comprises an area of land to the west of Beech Hill, which currently forms the existing garden for this property. These photos taken from the west of Beech Hill looking towards the western boundary show the sloping site. This photo shows the existing driveway which serves Beech Hill, which would also serve the proposed dwelling, sorry, and the lane which forms part of the application site and provides private pedestrian right-of-way to the hollow is also shown here. This photo shows the west elevation of the existing property Beech Hill and the existing parking area for this property. The application proposes the erection of one dwelling, a detached three-bedroom dwelling as shown here on the proposed site plan. The dwelling would be accessed via the existing driveway which serves Beech Hill. The tree plan shown here shows that the beech tree within the middle of the site is to be removed, which is shown in the photo below. The plan also shows that a replacement tree would be planted in a similar position. The proposed elevations for the dwelling are shown here. The proposed dwelling would feature two stories and would be set into the slope of the hill as shown on the side elevations, with the north elevation having a single-story appearance, and the full two stories being seen from the south elevation. We've received clarification shown on the east elevation, sorry, that box planting would overhang the lane which provides the private pedestrian right-of-way. However, the plan clarifies that the pedestrian right-of-way would not be restricted. All the windows in the south elevation would be obscure glazed up to 1.8 metres and fixed shut. There are terrace areas proposed on the west elevation with 1.8 metre screening along the south side. The proposed floor plan shows that the dwelling will provide three bedrooms and an attached garage. The section plan shown here shows how the dwelling would sit within the slope of the hill and the relationship between the proposed dwelling and the neighbouring property to the south, the hollow. These photos show views of the site from within the rear garden of the hollow. Officers consider the main issues to be the impact on visual amenity and impact on residential amenity, and our officers are recommending approval of the application. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Now move to public speaking. I call on Mr Robb Coombs. You have four minutes from when you start speaking, and after three and a half minutes you'll hear a little beep just to remind you that time is moving on.
Okay. Good evening. We thank the planning committee for their visit to the site on the 2nd of April and respectfully request that the council reject the development proposal for Beech Hill as the majority of the longstanding residents strongly oppose the proposal. In addition, Haysmere Town Council have also objected to the development stating overdevelopment of the site and loss of amenity to neighbours. Both Waverley Borough Council and the Department of the Environment rejected a development proposal on this site previously stating amongst other concerns that the development of the site would be intrusive and was unsuitable due to overlooking and subsequent loss of privacy afforded to the residents of the hollow. The current proposal in our view has not overcome the previous objections and nothing on site has materially changed. In our due diligence of the hollow, we found this rejection for development and uncovered that the property was subject to restrictions for any further development as it is limited to one dwelling house on the entire site. These factors were key to our decision in purchasing the property 25 years ago. What has changed over this period are the planning rules and the human rights law. We believe that the proposed development is in contravention of the following aspects of the current policy planning default. It should be appropriate to the site in terms of its scale, height, form, and appearance, be of a design and materials which reflect the local distinctiveness of the area, not significantly harm the amenities of occupiers of neighbouring properties by way of overlooking, loss of light, overbearing appearance, or other adverse environmental impacts. The proposed development lower floor is situated some 4.3 metres above the ground floor of the hollow. So the height of the development in total is 12 to 13 metres, approximately 40 feet above the hollow. This elevated position would have a dominating impact on the hollow and ensures that the private amenity area of the hollow's house and garden would be severely overlooked, resulting in a serious invasion of the hollow's privacy. The addition of obscure glazing to the proposal only serves to reinforce the objection of overlooking and does not address the wider loss of privacy. We would therefore urge you to consider the responsibilities of the council under the Human Rights Act, in particular Protocol 1, Article 1, which states that a person has the right to peaceful enjoyment of all their possessions which includes the home and other land. Article 8 of the Human Rights Act says that a person has a substantive right to respect for their private and family life. From your site visit, you will have seen for yourselves how inappropriate this development would be. We disagree with a number of the comments and conclusions made in the case officer's report and have further concerns on matters relating to site access and the unsuitability for heavy construction vehicles, maintaining access to the hollow on the rear private lane for fire service vehicles, drainage and sewer provision is unclear, providing main service to the site and the requirement for 7 kilowatt of electrical power, further removal of trees and hedgerow, and the biodiversity impact specifically with regards to the bat population. In conclusion, we recognise the difficulty that the council has in meeting government housing quotas, but respectfully request that this new planning application be rejected based on these comments that are supported by the majority of the local residents, Haysmere Town Council, and the historic rulings of the Secretary of State for the Department of the Environment and Waverley Borough Council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Members, open it up to you. Councillor Munna.
Thank you, chairman. I thank the officers for their report, which covers all the relevant areas. I don't actually agree that design is not relevant to this. It's an interesting design. The zinc roof is a very modern form of metal, but it seems to have some very good qualities. However, I was struck by the fact that in order to try and deal with or circumvent the concerns about overlooking, which are terribly obvious once you go to the site, great efforts have been made to really limit the views from the house to the south. And this is a bit of a pity because the main views which are worth having from the house are indeed to the south. Now, obviously you can go into the garden and enjoy them there. But I think the main issue for me was one which led me to slightly question one comment in the officer's report, and that was whether the previous decisions, nearly 30 years, or over 30 years ago, could be said to have very limited weight. Now, leaving aside planning policy changes, which clearly have been substantial, a big issue is overbearing properties, the overbearingness of this particular application. And that's a concern of the town and country planning situation, which has been theirs since 1948 as far as I know. So I think if the inspector was concerned 30 years ago that a somewhat lower building would have those effects on the hollow, it's entirely appropriate for us to be concerned about it today when the building is actually somewhat higher, being two-story rather than one-story. My feeling, having paid a site visit twice in fact, is that I am concerned about that aspect of it. And though I'll listen with great interest to all those who were on the site visit in particular as well, I'm currently minded not to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Knowles.
Thank you, chairman. I would support the remarks made by my colleague councillor Mulliner. The building doesn't look that much in keeping by what is displayed. Also, I note in the report that the Thames Water have made no comments, and of course there is water supply and drainage to be considered. I find it amazing that the county highways don't have any problems with the access because that entrance there, although it's currently there and used, is not the most safe, I would say, in Haysmere, talk about the borough. So I have severe reservations about this, and my feelings are much as councillor Mulliner. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Looking at the update sheet, impact on trees. Now, I'm not quite clear here. There's obviously been a large clearance of trees here, but... Policy NE2 of the local plan part one, 2018, the council will seek where appropriate to maintain and enhance existing trees. Fine, very worthy. Woodland and hedgerows within the borough retain policies D6 and D7 of the local plan 2002, et cetera, et cetera. Officers have noted that there's been previous tree removal. And even the tree officer says that the existing trees to the rear of the property, to the north of the property, will be subject to harm due to the roots, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very clear there that they're going to lose those trees. Now, either we're protecting trees or we're not. Either we've got a policy or we haven't. So, you know, the issue there is we're going to lose the trees, but it doesn't matter. You know, we're going to plant another tree with the one that's going to be removed, the large one, which is quite a beautiful tree. Fine. Then you look at the loss of amenity to the hollows. I'm sorry, this is unacceptable. You can look straight into the living room from the front of that house. And I understand that we want to build houses, but there are residents to consider here. There are lots of issues. We must protect what we have as far as we possibly can. This is a modern design, completely out of keeping with any of the other properties there, which are very typical of the Haysmere vernacular. So I cannot support this application. I think it's completely out of keeping, loss of amenity, loss of trees. Even our own tree officer says it's wrong. So I will be voting against the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Rand.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I agree with some of my colleagues and not all of them. On trees, they do grow, sometimes very quickly. I sometimes feel we're a bit over the top in protecting trees all the time, particularly they're not that attractive. The tree that's going to be removed is the one which we thought on the site visit yesterday would remain, and it's pretty gaunt. I also disagree that it's not in keeping with the area. The original properties in whose original garden most of these other neighbours sit are fine Edwardian probably, or Victorian buildings of a century ago. They look very nice and they're traditional. But all the others built in the succeeding decades are different. And I think this property has an intriguing modern design which I applaud. I wish there were more like this. And it fits in, in a sense that it's not as ugly as some of the others already there. And I'm not referring to the hollow in this respect. I appreciate it is slightly overbearing to the neighbour, but it's well screened at the moment. And I'd be in favour of being... I'd be... My thing is to be in favour of this application provided they made one small change, which is the... If you look at the east elevation on the screen there, there's a kind of terrace on the very left which overhangs the existing, what has been referred to as pedestrian access. Plainly, it used to be vehicular access. I don't think it's a planning issue as to who has what vehicular access there or doesn't. But I just think it's a mistake for it to overhang that old lane in such a way that it could never be used again for vehicular access. So if we... Well, my own view is that if we had an amendment to push back that overhanging terrace, which doesn't really seem... It might be thought to be expendable. I would then be minded to approve, because otherwise I think it's charming. Thank you.
We do have to judge what's theirs. If I could just make a comment, the Haysmere design statement does state that when new developments proposed, imaginative solutions should be found to achieve higher density without undermining the character of the existing area. Goes on to say further, "Care must be taken to ensure that any new development sits well in the street scene, and the form of any new development must be appropriate to the site it sits in." I found the design of this house interesting, but I found the overlooking aspect of the house on the other side of the driveway quite disturbing personally. The loss of amenity for them, I thought, would be considerable. Also disagree with Surrey highways, not that we're really allowed to, but I must say that when I exited the site, I poked my nose out onto the Midhurst Road and rapidly withdrew. I had to lower my window to listen to traffic coming up the hill because it's totally blind. So, you know, I did find it quite distressing. And if you look at the footpath leading into Haysmere, very narrow. A mother wouldn't be pushing a pram up there, it's not wide enough. But that's something else. But I do find the overlooking aspect and the loss of amenity quite severe. Councillor King.
Thank you very much, chairman. There are a couple of things that we need to consider here. I mean, one of the things that always... I know I go on about. I believe a house of this size needs a decent amount of amenity space for children to play and families to enjoy the space. And the same obviously applies to the hollow. I don't believe this now gives sufficient amenity space of a level area that is any value. But I think our real judgement, matter of judgement, is to decide whether this new application changes what the actual inspector said at the last time he looked at the development. Okay, for a slightly different house. But his words were that it would form an intrusive feature in the landscape. Now, what's changed? I can't see that anything's changed from that. And it's also, he felt that it was detrimental to the visual qualities of the surrounding area with its spacious character and many trees. I honestly can't see that anything has changed. Thank you.
Councillor Coburn.
Sorry to Councillor Edwards, you are on the list, but occasionally the chairman doesn't read my list. Just goes elsewhere. Just wanted to make a very brief point, but in fact, I will agree totally with councillor King on both the inspector's report. I don't think this has remotely overcome all the doubts that he had. And I agree with you on the amenity space, I think both of the properties. But the point I was just going to make was on design. Design is highly subjective, and I'm not going to say whether this is good or bad. But I always say that if you have to use a huge amount of obscured glazing in rooms other than bathrooms, you have probably not got a good design. I think you should design that out, otherwise I just think it's poor design. Thank you very much. And now it's your turn, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. Just going back to my colleague's comment about the balcony per se. We can only decide on what's before us tonight, what may be better. So it's about what's on the table today that we're going to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, members. It looks as though we move to the recommendation. Let me get... Make sure I got this one right. Okay. Thank you very much, Emma. The recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 10 and informatives 1 to 12 set out in the report, and condition 11 contained in the update sheet, and amended condition 8 and the additional informative 13, permission be granted. Those in favour of granting, please show. Those against?
That is nine.
Resentions?
Two, sorry, eight and two.
Eight and two. Thank you very much. Therefore, can I have an alternative recommendation, please? Councillor Munna.
That permission be refused.
Thank you. A second to councillor Coburn. Thank you.
Please just a second, Mr Chair.
Thank you very much. And reasons, please?
Contrary to policy D1 principally, C, D4, C, and TD1, five, taking on board councillor King's comments about the inadequate amenity space. I think it's a harm to the residential amenity of the neighbours, both overlooking and overbearing appearance.
Thank you. Officers? Just a few seconds, please. Chris French.
Thank you, chairman. I think there are two kind of separate reasons that have been referred to. One is the impact on the neighbours' amenity, and something along the lines of the proposal would have unacceptable impact on the amenities of the neighbouring occupiers of the hollow by reason of overlooking and overbearing impacts to the rear amenity space owing to the two-story height and change in levels in close proximity to the hollow. And therefore contrary to policy TD1 of the 2018 local plan part one, and policies D1 and D4 of the 2002 local plan. Then I think there's a separate reason in terms of the amenity space that's to be retained for the proposed dwelling that I think that's being referred to. So the proposed dwelling would not provide with sufficient amenity space for proposed three-bedroom dwelling, would be harmful to the amenities of future occupants, contrary to policies TD1 of the local plan part one and guidance contained within the MPPF. That's what I had from the discussion, but if there are other points, happy to. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Munna, you...
One comment, I think bringing the usual terms mass and scale of the building, because that picks up on the fact this is a larger building than the one that the inspector was concerned about 30 years ago.
Thank you, chairman. I've got that.
Fine. Members, you've heard the recommendation for refusal. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour of those?
That's nine, no, that's 10, unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Permission is refused. Right, we move on with the agenda to item A2. Maybe one or two people wish to leave. And present it. Item A2 then, WA 2018, 2174, Barners Harvest Nurseries, Grange Road, Tilford. It's on pages 37 to 48 of your agenda. The precedent erection of extensions, including alterations to elevations. And Philippa is standing to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. And good evening, members. As the chairman's just set out, this application is for the erection of extensions, including alterations to elevations. I'd like to draw members' attention to an update that was emailed to you this morning regarding the comments submitted by Tilford Parish Council, which were omitted in error from the officer's report. For the avoidance of doubt, I would like to set out that Tilford Parish Council object to the proposal, which is under consideration today. Their objection is summarized as follows. The scale and bulk of the proposal would be detrimental to the environment and would result in additional light pollution, the application of retained policy RD2 of the Local Plan 2002, and the use of the phrase precedent as set out in the supporting document. With regards to the comments from Tilford Parish Council regarding RD2, or policy RD2, the application has been assessed on its individual merits. With regards to policy RD2, I would refer to the wording of the policy, which sets out that the extension of dwellings in the Green Belt will be permitted where the additions would not result in additions over and above the original dwelling. Officers are satisfied that RD2 has been applied correctly. The subtext of policy RD2 sets out that proposals which utilize part of the volume of an existing building would have less of an impact on the rural character of the area than proposals involving wholly external enlargements. With regards to the comments received regarding a precedent, officers would point out that applications are assessed on their own merits. This has not altered the officer's recommendation as set out in the Agenda Report. So this slide shows the location plan, and it shows the location of the existing dwelling to the north of Grange Road, which is accessed via the existing access track here. And you'll note that the dwelling is to the northwest of the Timber Yard Harvest Nurseries. Here we have the aerial photograph, again, showing the location of Harvest Nursery's Timber Yard there, and the dwelling to the northwest of the Timber Yard. This slide shows the proposed block plan, again, showing that the bulk of the extension would be here with a number of kind of articulated bay-window extensions. I've provided some photographs of the site. Photograph A is taken from the north and shows the side elevation of the existing dwelling. Photograph B, taken from the east, shows the rear elevation of the existing dwelling. Photograph C is taken from the southwest and shows the front elevation of the existing dwelling. And D shows the other side, which is the southeast in elevation. Oh, sorry, it's taken from the southeast and showing the other side elevation. And this slide shows the proposed elevations. The main bulk of the extension is this portion here. And this slide shows the proposed floor plans. Again, the main extent of the extension is this element of the proposal. So officers consider the main issues for your consideration today to be the impact on the Green Belt and the impact on the AONB, AGLV, AHLV, and the design and visual amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Philippa. We now move into public speaking. First, I'll call on Kevin Quinn, please. You have four minutes, as you well know, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I live immediately adjacent to the Timber Yard, and I've been asked to speak by a number of the neighbours. The Linear Verdi Plant Nursery Barn is owned by Mr. Trevellion and is part of the 41 hectare Green Hills Estate. The land has been used primarily as a tree nursery since the 1950s. The whole site area is in an AONB, AGLV, and is covered by an Article 4 directive that was issued back in 1957 in order to protect and preserve this land for agriculture and forestry. The land was acquired by Mr. Trevellion in 2000, we understand, for a relatively small amount of money because of the sensitive countryside location and restrictive land use. In 2013, a statement was issued advising that the businesses of Linear Verdi and Harvest Nurseries had incurred financial difficulties, and that both companies had to close down their operations of being a tree and plant nursery. A planning application was submitted at that time to convert the Linear Verdi barn into a single self-contained residential unit of two floors, and this doubled the building area from 167 to 334 metres squared. The previous planning statement at that time stated that the existing structure would be reused, and that there was no intention to increase the size of the building. On that basis, consent was granted. This planning application now increases the previously permitted development area by a further 42% to 475 metres squared, more than double in size. The original dwelling, for the purposes of this application, is, should be the barn building at the time of the permanent change of use, which was 167 metres squared, and which was granted in 2013. With the benefit of 100% extension, and not the newly constructed 2018 dwelling, we consider this application is an abuse of the rules of policy RD2. The barn is located in open woodland, and the proposed extensions to the barn will cause harm to what is currently there. The increased scale is inappropriate, and the light pollution caused by this development is of serious concern, as it can be seen from the nearby Triple SI Frenchham Pond. We are concerned as residents that this application is one of a number of planning applications that have been made by Mr. Trevellion and his associated companies. In May 2013, we had the original application to change the barn to residential use. On 7 December 2015, there was a fire at the Timber Yard, where the admin and sales buildings at Harvest Wood Products were destroyed. And in 2017, these buildings were given consent for 225 metres squared of fire-damaged buildings to be replaced, which are now of residential appearance. In May 2017, consent was granted to increase the size of two large warehouse buildings through the introduction of mezzanines and for a further change of use. Two years ago, there was an application for large-scale events to be held on the Green Hills Estate land. Last month, this planning committee overturned policy and advised that they were minded to grant consent for recreational use, which we question the legitimacy of. Our main concern about this is because we believe that this change of use is linked to the longer-term aspirations for residential development of this significant estate. We are further concerned by high fences, which have been erected throughout the estate without consent, and which are out of keeping with the rural character of the area. Other neighbours in the road have been refused planning consent for relatively small extensions to their properties due to the greenbelt considerations. And we do not understand why it would appear that Mr. Trevellion appears to be receiving preferential treatment, and why planning policy is not being followed equally for all. I would ask that this committee considers the planning policy objections that we have made to allow the continual creep of further inappropriate residential development in a sensitive location is wrong, in our view. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn. Now call on Deborah Lee.
Good evening, Chair and committee. Thank you for allowing us to speak about this application. We note your report said that no parish council comments were received. They were submitted in good time, and I'm pleased that you've got sight of them now. Knowing the site as well as we do, from a very local perspective, we are surprised that this has been recommended for approval. As a council, we believe these changes are contrary to policy disproportionate additions and will appear significantly more intrusive to the environment. This extension does not integrate in its surroundings as it's situated centrally in large, exposed, open woodland. The scale is inappropriate and detrimental to the environment. And the changes to the design and projections will flood the area with significant additional light pollution. As you may be aware, Tilford is a dark village with no street lighting, and therefore this would not be welcome. Situated within the Green Belt, close to Frenchham Pond, this building is very close to an area classed as a site of special scientific interest. The screening that you refer to in your report appears currently all but non-existent. And the access to this site is sensitive. In fact, I've heard the views of this committee at a previous meeting whilst discussing Grange Road, when a councillor stated it was a two-way tarmac road. In actual fact, it has dual usage. It's a classification of both a D-road and a boat, a biwayard ball traffic. And the access is difficult. Grange Road also ends at a deep ford, so extra housing or development with such access would feel unsuitable. As a council, we and our electors have been presented with multiple applications, both residential and otherwise, for this site, and have had questions as to their approval. And generally, we feel disappointed to see such a site evolve in this way. And we would like it to be protected appropriately by Green Belt policy. For us, this is not an appropriate site for housing development based on our reasons above. And we hope that you, as a committee, will recognize that a large, bulky dwelling of this scale on an agricultural site set in open woodland in the Green Belt, AONB, AGLV, and subject to Article 4 directive should not be permitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shall we move on to Michael Connelly?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the committee, for allowing me to talk. I'm going to address my comments only to the objections that have been raised by the objectors here tonight. First of all, the Article 4 directive has nothing to do with the protection of the forestry or agricultural uses of the site. What it does is prevent limited permitted development right uses of the site. So it's irrelevant to the case. With regard to the objectors, note that there is a 42% increase in floor area. That is not the case. It is 32% over the consented scheme, which has now been built out. The application site is also not in woodland. It is clear there are trees in the surrounding area, but these are all ornamental and are the last vestiges which have not been removed from the previous Linear Verdi use, which sold ornamental trees. Many of the objections I've heard now have nothing to do with this application, but to do with other applications on the Green Hills site. The Green Hills site was formerly a forestry site. That use failed due to the production of cheaper wood in Greater Europe. Therefore, other uses have to be found, which they have been. All of these are compliant with the MPPF in terms of the industrial uses and the reuse of existing buildings, which are completely compliant with paragraph 145 and 146 of the MPPF, which list the appropriate uses in the Green Belt, which would not cause harm. With regard to the access which have been complained about, the access already exists. It is particularly good, and the house exists. Therefore, a modest 32% extension would have no impact upon road safety. Also, those of you who will have used Grange Road will know that it is a full two-carriage width wide, and that cars can pass each other quite easily. Comments have been made, they're nothing to do with this application, about the replacement of the fences. The existing fences are always being replaced on this estate. They get old, and they're replaced, but they're replaced with exactly the same form as those that have been taken down initially. Also, no street lighting is proposed as part of this application. That's completely incorrect. The only light will come from the windows in the dwelling, the same as all other dwellings in the Tilford area. One comment which is completely wrong and untrue and misleading in that the Trevellions actually get a better run at planning than anybody else. I'm their architect, but I'm also architect for many of the residents in Tilford. Can I say that this 32% extension is modest? I regularly get consents of 40%, which is completely policy compliant, and for many of those people that surround the application site. This application will have no impact upon the surrounding houses. It's more than 100 metres away from the nearest house, and the site is largely surrounded by tree screening. Also, the site cannot be seen from Frenchham Pond. I have been there and looked. It is invisible from Frenchham Little Pond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connelly. We move on, members? Counselor Adam.
Yes, the point I think that was most significant when I called this in was, in fact, the additional size of the building and what it should really be compared to. But I was assured this morning by Philippa that, in fact, the size of 32% increase is correct in that the measurement of the 40% in Green Belt and ANOB only applies to a dwelling, not a building that was there before the dwelling. So the dwelling was approved, as correctly stated, I think, in 2013. And it's therefore, it is, the 32% is measured from that size, not the, not the size of the original barn. Now, I don't know the answer to that, whether in fact that is a correct interpretation by the officers or not. Perhaps our lawyer could comment on that. Because that really is the most significant issue. Second issue, I think, is, in fact, light pollution from the very large windows. It is, Tilford is a dark area. I think that one condition we could add perhaps is that no external lights should be above first-floor level, and they should be of limited luminosity. Can't say wattage these days, because 30 watts in an LED is very bright. So that is a factor. I mean, we could ask the applicant to shelter the building more widely by planting additional trees along the road. As I think that seems to be one of the main objections by the residents. But apart from that, it seems to me that the application is totally policy compliant. And therefore, we don't really have, unless there is an issue with those points I've raised, we don't really have an issue with allowing this application.
Thank Counselor Adam, sir. Just wonder if, is that Counselor Coburn?
Don't let me stop you wondering, Chairman. I just really wanted to ask the question, it follows on a little bit from what Counselor Adam said. I thought our test was more harm to the Green Belt than is currently there. I thought that was one of our key tests. When we're looking at any development in the Green Belt, we're testing whether or not there's already harm, and whether that harm is increased by whatever we're suggesting. And therefore, some development with no, well, some uses are acceptable. But something increasing the harm to the Green Belt is unacceptable by our policies and by Green Belt sort of national policy. So could I have some clarity on that? Because I would have thought this just flies in the face of everything we've been saying that this committee about built form within the Green Belt.
Referring to the MPF in paragraph 1.45, the test is the extension or alteration of a building provided that it does not result in disproportionate additions over and above the size of the original building. And obviously, the local plan policies then go on to try and clarify what is considered proportionate, which is 40% of the original. proportionate, which is 40% of the original floor area. Another test within the Green Belt is it shouldn't impact on openness. And obviously, the building, as it sits, it's difficult to sort of understand how that would arise. So the test that the officer quite rightly undertook in the assessment of the application was, did it conform with the 40% in addition to the floor space original? And original, in this instance, can only be considered that which has been approved and the building structure is now in place. So I believe that the officer did make the right assessment, and that 32% is the proportion of the increase, which is in accordance with the plan policy.
Can I just ask that you make some comments on Councillor Adams' consideration of no exterior lighting and extra planting on the site? Chris?
Just one point of clarification. If you're looking at the barn as it was, the only difference between that and the dwelling is the mezzanine floor, which is at first-floor level. So externally, the bulk mass of the building wouldn't be any different, whether it's the barn or whether it's the original dwelling in this instance. Thank you, Chairman.
As I understand, there aren't any conditions stated at the moment in relation to lighting, but we can formulate conditions in relation to lighting, controlling the lighting and the values of it, so it doesn't have any impact. There is an informative within, in relation to bats and the wildlife. So again, that feeds through to the need to be sensitive in terms of lighting, but we can certainly include a condition that will control the external lighting to the property and additional landscaping as well.
Thank you very much. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just looking at the additional update sheet from the parish council here, and if this building is not disproportionate in the Green Belt, I don't know what is, I'm sorry. I mean, this is, I can understand why they want to build it, and, you know, it'd be very nice to have a nice big house in the middle of this wonderful countryside, which is supposedly being protected. It is disproportionate. It is detrimental to the environment. There will be intrusion onto the beautiful Green Belt landscape that we have. It can be seen from the SSI. It's totally against what we're here for. I mean, I don't understand this. It's a bulky development, and it's over the top. When is enough enough? Will they be coming back for another extension? You know, and we find reasons to allow it? I can't understand it, not in the Green Belt, I'm sorry.
Councillor Edwards, just refer to the relevant planning history, 2013, 1042. There's a change of use of barn to a single dwelling, together with alteration and demolition in the outbuildings. It was amplified by email dated 28th of October 2013. Informative information received on the 28th of October 2013, and full permission was granted for that building. So this is a 32% increase in that size. Councillor Mullner?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think I've certainly taken the point that not only is the starting point the floor area of the dwelling, not the original building, but in fact, Chris French has made it clear that in terms of external appearance, it's the same building. It's just they put a floor in to double the floor area. However, Councillor Coburn asked a very relevant question, to which he's not had an answer, and I'll ask it again. It was certainly my understanding that if you thought that any development would bring further harm to the Green Belt, that was a perfectly valid reason for refusal if the committee was so minded. The fact that an extension might comply with RD2 was not in itself a complete answer to the more general point about causing harm to the Green Belt. Could we have that question specifically answered, please?
Okay, I think we're slightly weeding into the territory of subjectivity in terms of, does it have an impact on the Green Belt? The policy as constructed was clearly constructed in order to provide some clarity on that. You know, again, I would ask members to consider the design of the building, to consider the built form as constructed, and consider, in their opinion, if they believe that this impacts on the openness of the Green Belt, which is the test ordinarily applied. And if it did, you know, officers, remind, if it did impact on the openness of the Green Belt, would there be exceptional circumstances? And those are the tests that we would have to take on to the MPPF. So, I mean, I don't really want to lead members down the road to where they should take. You know, is it considered appropriate in terms of the design that was originally there? In my opinion, it could be considered more articulate and probably a better design. But that is my, maybe my opinion, if I chose to voice it.
Thank you, Patrick. Councillor Coburn?
Sorry to come back, but, you know, I think planning is all about consistency, and I feel very much that we, as a committee, have to send out a consistent message. And the message we have been sending out consistently, meeting after meeting, is that anything that creates more harm to the openness of the Green Belt in terms of any form of built form, but obviously a house in particular, is not acceptable. And we have made decision after decision on that. We've been to nurseries and looked at buildings, or at least labs, where we were told there had been buildings. But because they weren't there, we didn't give permission, because, you know, we are not here to increase or decrease the openness of the Green Belt, basically. And that is what we have decided time after time. And I'm failing to understand, whatever the percentage is, why this isn't automatically going to create more harm to the Green Belt in terms of its openness. It's a bigger building. It's certainly going to be more visually intrusive because of its design, and I cannot see how that's acceptable. And I'm not trying to be awkward, I just genuinely cannot see the advice that's coming through to me. I cannot see what I'm being told, if you so to me, no, I can't understand it.
Philippa?
Thank you. I would just add that this application, the application under consideration is for the erection of extensions to an existing dwelling. So officers' role here is to, and members, is to decide or make a judgment whether what is being proposed is harmful Green Belt development. And in doing so, we have applied RD2, and we feel that this complies with that policy. So it's just going back to what we are actually assessing here, which is extensions to a dwelling which was permitted under the 2013 application, rather than for the full proposal of a dwelling in this location. Thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Yes, I mean, looking at that picture, it looks as if there's a mansion being developed on this site. I mean, it looks enormous. But if you could put up the photograph of the existing building, you'll see that actually it's not that large. And when you see the end of it, you'll see how low it is. It's not as enormous as it appears in those drawings. So that is the size of the existing building, and it's being increased by about a third, I think. Is it 32% in space? So as you can see, it's not actually that intrusive, and it's not that large. I think those drawings are misleading in that respect.
Councillor Knowles?
Thank you, Chairman. I only wanted to support the words of the vice-chairman, because we do seem to have a trend now to come to meetings, and there's reasons why things wouldn't be allowed in policy, but there's always, there should be an exception. And we seem to be going towards this trend, which is one I don't think we should be supporting. If there's a policy, then we should be sticking to it. Not every time, oh, well, there's three or four reasons why you shouldn't, but let's make an exception, because exceptions seem to be what comes out every time.
Lewis?
Thank you, Chairman. The exception is in the MPPF for additions to buildings that aren't disproportionate. And I think the question for members is one of whether the additions are disproportionate in this case. The 40% isn't a set requirement. I think it's intended to be a guide for members. It's not to say that additions that fall below the 40% can't still be disproportionate, but that those falling over the 40% are likely to be. So although this is only 32%, I think, that, as per RD2, indicates that it may not be disproportionate, but it may still be, in your judgement, disproportionate. And so you have to have regard to the considerations that are set out in RD2, such as the effect of the proposal on the rural character of the area, the overall scale of development on the site, and various other elements of that policy. But I think that's what members need to be asking themselves. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mullner?
Thank you for letting me come back. That does help, thank you very much. I think that's certainly what my original understanding was, that it's a decision on the merits of each case, and all RD2 is to provide you with a rubric, if you like, that if something is above 40%, you'd be tending to think, well, it almost certainly is going to be too harmful to be accepted. If it's below it, as you say, it may be acceptable, but there's no guarantee. One can think of various confirmations of extensions which might not trigger the 40%, but might be, for other reasons, completely unacceptable. So it comes down to a judgment whether we think this particular extension is one that we're happy with or not. Thank you.
Is that it, members? Do you want to, Patrick or Philippa, talk about the lighting and extra planting before we move to the recommendation?
On the previous application, it mentions that SIL is applied. Now, in fact, this is over the 100 square metres base limit, so if this one is approved, presumably SIL would be applied to this as well.
I'll ask Philippa to answer that one.
Thank you, Chair. No, this application is not SIL liable, because the floor area calculations are different for SIL than they are for RD2, and it comes to 99 square metres, not 100. Because one's internal and one's external. It's internal floor area for SIL, as opposed to external.
Recommendation is that subject conditions 1.3 and 2 additional conditions in relation to external lighting and landscaping, and informatives 1 to 2, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
Two.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Therefore, can I have an alternative recommendation, please? Abstentions? None? Oh, one, sorry. Alternative recommendation, Councillor Mullner?
That permission be refused.
Thank you. Second up, please, Councillor Knowles. Thank you, and Reed.
That the proposed extension would do unacceptable harm to the openness of the Green Belt.
Councillor Coburn?
Could we, sorry, I'm waiting for the officers. No. I wish to ask a question, but I didn't want to interrupt your discussion on that, so let me know when you finish that discussion, I'll come back with my question. I wondered whether we could do something on the design and the increase in fenestration and the light pollution that Councillor Adams has also raised in this particular sensitive area.
So the conditions for refusal, would you just like to read them out again, Chris, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I think there are the two that have been referred to. One is the Green Belt reason. I think probably needs to be clear on whether you consider it to be a disproportionate addition, regardless of whether it might be or not disproportionate in pure floor space terms. So what I've got here is the proposal would constitute a disproportionate addition over and above the original dwelling in terms of bulk and massing, and therefore would not accord with policy RE2 of the local plan 2008, or policy RD2 of the 2002 local plan. I've got a second reason, which is the proposal by virtue of the proposed expanse of fenestration would result in an unacceptable level of light pollution, which would not accord with retained policies D1 and D4 of the local plan 2002, and policy TD1 of the local plan 2018.
Proposals, are you happy with that? Right. So you've heard the recommendations for refusal. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour of that refusal? Against? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Planning permission for that is refused. And that concludes our meeting this evening. Thank you all.